Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Maplewood City Council Workshop. Ms. Coleman, would you please do our roll call for us?
Absolutely. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here.
Next thing we have on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I have approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Okay. Next thing we have is unfinished business. We've got the tree sale for private properties, which was an initiative that I brought forward last year as a result of Minnetonka's tree program and the success that they were having out there. And the concern that I had raised about the Emerald Ash Bore and also, most recently in December, the -- Ginny, can you tell me what is our new bug that we should be concerned about?
It's that agiliad. We're going to talk about that a little bit later.
Okay.
It's a scale insect.
Okay, a scale insect that was brought in by accident?
Christmas wreaths and greenery.
Okay, from Menards and --
Menards and Home Depot.
I think it was out of North Carolina.
Yes.
But anyway, so we've got some concerns about the viability of our trees and the quality of the canopy in the next 10, 15 years. So, let's see. City Manager Coleman, do you want to introduce this for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, as you mentioned, we really were talking about how to replace the loss of our trees due to Emerald Ash Bore and other diseases that we're hearing about now. So, the council asked us to look into a more aggressive tree planting program than we had before, and to look at some options. And Ms. Gainer and Mr. -- Ms. Robbins is here too, and Mr. Funk have all worked together to bring this report forward. And it does have a really good program, I think, for us to consider. And it is modeled after the Minnetonka program very much. And we are using Tree Trust, which is how they -- who they use to kind of put their program together for them. So, with that, we are just looking for consent that we're on the right track. I know that we're going to need additional work from our communications staff and our natural resource staff to make sure that we're communicating this and getting people to be aware of this great program that they have, so we can reinvest in trees in our community. So, with that, Mayor, I'd have you call on Ms. Gainer.
Ms. Gainer, would you tell us about this tree program, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So, thank you for the good background information, too. I'm going to skip through a couple of these bullets, since we all know now that we are looking at a tree program, in part because of Emerald Ash Bore. We know that's going to be decimating our urban forest. And a lot of our urban trees are -- a lot of our urban forest is comprised of private trees, trees on private land. So, last October, council reviewed the city's tree rebate program, the Minnetonka's tree sale program, and we talked a little bit about Tree Trust, what they can offer community partners as partners. And council requested information on how much would all this -- how much time would this take staff and what kind of financial resources would we need to put into it. So, after discussing -- talking with folks from Minnetonka and Tree Trust, we decide -- we estimate that if we had no partnership, if we went about this on our own, we'd need at least 120 hours to administer the program. That would be prior to and through -- during the online sale. And then about 80 hours for delivery and pickup days, which would be quite a bit of -- that would be public works time. Plus, that does not include IT time we'd need to prepare to launch and maintain an online payment system. If we partner with Tree Trust, those hours go down significantly to about 20 hours of staff interaction with them upfront. And then we're really just supporting them with some staff on delivery and pickup day. And we do think they are able to work with us. We could still do a tree sale this year if we partner with Tree Trust. If we were not to partner with them, it would be very difficult for staff to get up and running by March, essentially. So, how would it work with Tree Trust? So, if we go forward with it, in February, they're ready to order plants for us, prepare outreach materials, and set up that online payment portal. We've talked with our communications. We could put an article in the city newsletter, prepare that in February. It would go out in March. We'd have an opportunity in the April newsletter also to advertise. And then in early May, the sale would close, and in mid-May, the trees would be delivered and residents would pick them up. And then I want to show you, Tree Trust, their portal is actually up for the other cities they're working with. So, let's see. So, I want to see if I can pull that up for you, just a So, here's their webs -- oops, so I have it up here, but I guess I'm not -- let me see if I can close that one. Well, I guess I didn't -- I am not able to get it up.
It might be them.
Oh, thank you, Michael. So, do I just have to zero out on my PowerPoint? There we go. Okay, I might need you to help me get back.
Actually, hold on one second.
Okay. I'll be switching back in a minute. Okay. So, this is kind of fun to see. So, if we go with them, it would be very similar to how they work with St. Louis Park. And so, in clicking on that, so our website would send our residents to the Tree Trust portal here, and then it would -- they would go into "I Live in Maplewood." And as you can see here, the St. Louis Park sale, it doesn't go live until March 4th, but residents can get on and look and see what their plant options are. And there's about eight options for them. We'd have six to eight options as well. And so, for example, on the white fir, there is information from Bachmann's, so people could go in and get information on each tree and make their decision on what tree they'd like to go for. Some of the other trees they offered were river birch, Kentucky coffee tree, pink spires crab apple. Can you see the rest of the trees that they gave us? And so, we will get to pick. They sent me a list of about 12 or 15 trees, and we'd pick probably about eight. So, for St. Louis Park, the trees they had were the white fir, river birch, Kentucky coffee tree, pink spires crab apple, a shorter tree, triumph elm, one of the disease-resistant elm trees, a boulevard linden tree, autumn brilliant serviceberry, another smaller tree, and yellow wood. They're kind of -- they're pushing the envelope, too. On some of the trees, they're trying to get a few Zone 5 trees in. Were you really thinking about climate change today? Well, we're not so sure about tomorrow and the next day, but we are -- they are trying to bring in some trees that are a little bit more southern Iowa and see, because they're thinking they're doing fine here so far. Let's see. So, I'm going to go back out. Good. So, how would this work? Who would do what? So, Tree Trust then would prepare the publicity? Good. Ah, sorry. I can scroll through. Thanks. Tree Trust would prepare the publicity and the information sheets for us. They would order the trees. They would set up that online payment portal. They would monitor the sales during that online sale. And then, before people come to pick them up, they get a packet in the mail with color-coded file cards, so to make things go really smoothly on delivery day. And then during that whole time, all city staff would have to provide some back-and-forth service for them, and then as much additional publicity as we wanted to do. For delivery and pickup, then, they would arrange for the delivery. They would unload -- they would have some of their staff there, and they're -- they have some youth volunteers as well, youth staff, would unload trees and stage them for pickup. And then on pickup days, they'd have one to two staff helping out. And so, for city staff, for prep and -- we'd have to prepare the delivery area and help with unloading. We anticipated up to about 20 hours. And then, first, there would be a Saturday pickup. That was typically from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., so we'd need about five people to support that. And then, we'd have -- they typically follow a Saturday pickup up with a Monday evening pickup, just for people that can't -- that aren't around on the weekend. And that's usually just a couple hours on the evening. We're adding, you know, preliminary before and after time to that. So, the trees themselves would be, we'd have seven to -- five to seven species, maybe eight this year. Number 10 containers, you can see that's about the size in the photo there. These two photos are from Minnetonka's sale. The first year, the trees then would be about one inch diameter, five to six feet tall. The retail cost would be $120 to $150 tree. The first year, they're recommending we just do 100 to 150 trees. And then, as we get going with the sale, we can increase those numbers. On the cost to the city would be $80 to $100 per tree, and then $35 per tree for Tree Trust services. So, the average cost per tree then would come in at $90 plus 35. We're looking at $125. So, most cities have a cost share with their residents. So, here's some options for us. If the resident were to pay 35, the city would pay 90. If we get 100 trees this year, it would cost us $9,000. If we get 150 trees, it would cost us $13,500. If we went with $50 for a cost share, our costs would go down, so the city would have a $7,500 to $11, 250 cost. Funding can come out of the Tree Preservation Fund. This can be used to plant trees and to manage our urban forest. And that fund is funded by payments from developers who can't meet their planting requirements of the ordinance. Currently, there are 50 -- there's $59,000 in the fund. There's a couple other anticipated expenses from staff. We would love to do -- update our tree inventory, which would potentially be $15,000 to $20,000, and to create a tree plan as well. So, at some point, if revenue -- if there was not enough revenue available in the Tree Preservation Fund, we would need to find alternate funding source. So, I have three slides now on -- that aren't related to the tree sale, but are related to disease and our Emerald Ash Bore program. So, this is the disease that the mayor was referring to, elongate hemlock scale. It was found in December in Minnesota on hemlock wreaths sold at Menards and Home Depot. It's a scale insect that feeds on the needles, and the needles turn yellow and fall prematurely. Ultimately, they can kill the tree. So, they're very -- and they're very difficult to control with chemicals. So, the recommendation is if people purchased wreaths from them, to burn those wreaths or to wrap them in plastic and throw them away, not to compost them. You know, we think we've caught it early enough, so we're not worried that this is all of a sudden going to be a huge problem in the state, but we want to make sure people that purchase these products, if they still have them, dispose of them properly. So, it's something the state will continue to keep an eye on. So, a couple other tree pests, I think council was also interested in what else is out there that we need to be watching for. Well, there are many, many beneficial insects, bacteria and fungi. We could -- to remember that some cause minor issues, some are fine, some are cause minor issues, and some are really cause major -- are a major cause of concern. The Minnesota Department of Agriculture and the Department of Natural Resources have monitoring programs for early detection. They do things like traps and surveys. And so, what they really -- the preference is to do early detection and then rapid response to control those early infestations. So, the strategies then become slow the spread, often on some things, halting the spread and, you know, completely eliminating things does not work. So, some of the things on their list of concern are, of course, Emerald Ash Bore, which has now spread throughout the metro and elsewhere in Minnesota, Asian long-horned beetle is not yet in Minnesota, the brown marmarated stink bug is in the metro, and evidently it's very stinky, and it's like those box elder bugs and lady beetles that might get into your house in the warm -- on the warm days. Gypsy moth, they've been monitoring gypsy moths since 1970, and they've had some outbreaks, but they've been able to manage them. And I'm -- you're probably all familiar with Japanese beetles. Those are pretty widespread. They typically don't kill a whole tree, but the populations fluctuate, and there's some cyclical -- you know, it's not clear to me how cyclical it is, but you'll have years where there's a big infestation, and we'll get a lot of phone calls about that. In terms of some of the pathogens, oak wilt is one we're very concerned about in Maplewood. We do have a -- our disease tree program does inspect on private properties for oak wilt, and we do condemn trees that have oak wilt. We're on -- keeping our eye open for bur oak blight, that's in the metro now, not so widespread yet. And then, 1,000 canker's disease of walnut, not yet in Minnesota, but the DNR is watching out for that. So, just so I wanted to give you an update, since I'm here tonight, on our EAB program for this year. Our crew has just been amazing this winter, our public works crew. So, in fall of -- this past fall in 2018, we had our forester mark 150 trees for removal. And so, not all of these -- most of these did not have EAB. These were all trees, these were trees that were in very poor condition. A handful of them, probably five or six of them, had EAB. And so, over the course of about a month, they started in December 30th -- they started December 13th with removals, and in just over a month, they had removed 120 ash. The photos you're seeing are from this year's program. And for this year, the council had approved $100,000 for -- in CIP, for Emerald Ash Bore. So, the things we have remaining for EAB this year are, we're going to -- the crew will complete those removals. We'll hire a contractor to grind all those stumps. We will do EAB inspections. Our forester will do those in March. They like to do the winter inspections, where we're looking for woodpecking in the trees. And then, we'll do replacement planting likely this fall then by a contractor. And so, with that, I pass it back to the mayor and take any questions you have.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I think that this is a very proactive program that is going to help us, because I think the canopy here is really going to change over the next 10 or 15 years, and I really like the idea of being proactive. The trees that you identified, that you went through, they looked -- some of them looked really unique and different. I like that idea that we would have a variety, so that we might not have such a big loss as we're going to be looking at with the Emerald Ash Bore. Are those the trees that will be offered? Are they going to be disease-hardy -- excuse me, trees, to the extent that we can do that?
Most of them are. So, all trees are going to be impacted by some insects and diseases. For example, linden trees, it's a favorite of Japanese beetles, but I don't feel like that's a reason to not plant any lindens. They're really -- they're really valuable trees for wildlife, for pollinators and for wildlife. They're attractive, they smell great. So, anything that's -- like, for example, when we're picking a crab apple, we want to make sure one of those is the most disease-resistant crab we can find, because we know the crabs have a lot of disease, but some of them are more disease-resistant than others. So, something like that, yes, we're going to go for one of the disease-resistant varieties. But almost everything you saw is a pretty -- it's not going to have a lot of problems. There's no one insect that we -- or pest that we're associating with it right now. But you're absolutely right. Our whole strategy, you know, it took us -- Emerald Ash, it took us first Dutch elm disease, we replanted with ash, and now Emerald Ash Bore. It took those two huge infestations and losses of, you know, millions of dollars before people finally got it. We've got to diversify. You cannot do single tree planting anymore.
And oak wilt was in there somewhere between, I think, the -- yeah.
Oak wilt is -- and it's playing out differently, because not every tree is going to succumb to it, like almost every tree succumbed to Dutch elm and EAB.
Couple of other questions. I know the Minnetonka program has a limit. You know, if we do 150 trees in our first year, which is really what my preference would be, it's really kind of a trial to see, is this something that our community is interested in? I certainly heard from neighbors and residents out there that they really like this idea of being able to look ahead, expecting that they're going to lose their ash trees, and if they can plant something in their yard, so it doesn't look so sparse, at least plant it now, so that it can start growing up. And then, when they take the ash down, they have a, you know, a more mature tree in their yard. But I know that the other cities have put a limit on it, so that you can have -- you know, if we only do 150 trees, I think we certainly would want to do that. What's your thought on that?
So, if we do 150, I -- absolutely no more than two. So, that would be the question, is it one or two? And I would say with 150, we would do two -- we'd start with two trees, then.
Okay.
And if we did less, then maybe we'd have to say one.
And then, I know, too, that in the Minnetonka program, they have, I think, two different times, or the other programs that I've looked at online, they have two different dates when you can pick them up. And if people don't want to pick them up, then the tree reverts to the city.
Yes.
And then, we plant it in a park, which
Yes.
that certainly would be fine, too. But -- and maybe someone wants to donate that, a tree like that. But are you thinking of something like that as well?
Yes, because there --
I think people need to know about that.
Yeah, there is no refund, there is no warranty, and absolutely the other cities that we've talked to have said, you can't play around at the end. If they don't pick up their tree, that's it. You're not going to -- you're not going to wait around for them to come pick it up at their convenience.
Right, we can't store it somewhere.
We can't store it.
So, it's, yeah.
And that's another reason that when we select what trees we're going to offer, we want to make sure they're trees that we would want in our parks. So, just in case there are some left over.
Good idea. And my last point is, this program seems to me to be a natural fit with some type of companion program that the Nature Center would do. I know the Nature Center, you've done pollinators and talked about what people can do in their yards. What kinds of things is the Nature Center planning that you can do to come alongside to support this in some way, you know, along with the Tree Trust? But still, you've got to have some creative ideas, I'm sure.
Arbor Day is scheduled for May 4th. The tree sale would be May, the weekend after that or the following weekend. And our -- all of our program publicity is out already from March, April, May. So, it's tricky to just scoot another program in, but we potentially could put in a -- I think Minnetonka has a program where the forester does a PowerPoint on what trees they're offering and talks about the trees they're offering. So, potentially, we could do something like that. But for us, one of the big programs we have is our Arbor Day on April 4th.
Okay. And maybe there's something, too, that you would want to do with our communications department. I know you've done a great job on the videos, that you could do a video on this whole program, something about it, so that, you know, we have some cross-pollination here in terms of getting the word out. But I see it as a natural fit for the Nature Center.
Yeah, and I'm hoping -- I'm hoping our communications crew could do like a little one-minute, the importance of planting a tree, and then profiling this program.
Why are we doing this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think that'd be great. I think we really need that. I've always been concerned that we need a good campaign to go along with it. And we've got the two newsletters to do it with, but if we can get the video out with it, I think that's going to be huge.
Okay, good. And I'm looking forward to see what the Nature Center is going to do with it, too. Councilmember Juneman, you had a question?
Thank you. I think we need to do a little more research on linden trees. We have an American linden in our yard, and someone has said that the American basswood is a better tree, because it does not attract the beetles. We've had five years of the beetles after that tree. It cost us a lot of money this past year to have it sprayed.
Yeah.
But it's a major shade source, so you invest in it. But I do think we need to be careful. I don't know if it affects all the American types or not.
Yeah. So, basically, a linden -- an American basswood is a linden, but we have two types of linden. We have like a more of a street boulevard linden, and then our American basswood slash linden. And so, I have not heard that there's a difference between the two, but we'll look into that, and maybe we just won't offer that basswood this year.
And then, what about maple trees?
And, you know, the recommendation to us has been do not plant maples, since that where there's so many planted, and those are going to go. I mean, so when we order trees, you order pretty much an even -- almost even number of each species. And once they're gone, they're gone. What's nice about the portal is, you know, that's live -- you're seeing the inventory right there. So, you can't order something once it's done. So, for example, in our boulevard tree planting, we don't plant maples anymore, because so many people -- there's so many out there.
Plus, the reason I ask is because, you know, people will ask, because it's maple, and how come we don't have maple trees? So, we may as well clear that up. And then, there are diseases in maple trees as well. We lost a huge maple tree in our yard to Versilium wilt, which has appeared at other places in our neighborhoods. So, that would be a good reason. There are too many, and they are not disease-resistant. But I know the question will come up.
Thank you, Councilmember Juneman. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one comment and then a question for you. One, I think a good idea would be on pickup day, maybe, to have someone there who could hand out resource materials on how to plant the trees, or do hand out resource materials on how to plant the trees, or do a video about how to plant the trees. I think that would be really beneficial. I know we can't plant them there that day, but just somebody who would be on staff to talk about that.
Absolutely. We've already talked about having a master gardener out there, or a tree care advisor, which would be a volunteer out there to do that. Tree Trust provides us with literature, everybody gets a bag of mulch.
Oh, good.
And a how to plant a tree brochure.
Great.
But it's great if you can have somebody out there that's knowledgeable, that can answer any questions people will have about their trees.
And then my question, Mayor, would be to get some input from you on the level of financial participation that you would see for this program. And Ginny, maybe you'd like to put that slide back up.
You know, my preference is either $40 or $50 at the max, in terms of what our residents pay. And then the city contribution is going to be either 85 or 75. And my preference is, I'd like to go with 150 trees and see if we can really do a good job of marketing it. Councilmembers, what are your thoughts on that? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we can keep the cost down for residents as much as possible, I'd be even open to the 35 rate. I think we just want to keep it as, at least in this first year, as attractive as possible. And I think the, you know, the $1,000, $1,200 to the city that it would be to make that, make that switch is, I mean, it's $1,200, but it's not going to break the bank. And I think, in my mind, $35 sounds a lot better than 40.
I want to make sure that people have enough of an investment in it, and I know the other cities, they do $40. So I'm, I'm comfortable with 40 if my fellow council members are comfortable with 40.
I'm even comfortable with 50, but I agree with you, there has to be some investment from the resident because that's the only way they're going to keep track of taking care of it.
Because they're going to be responsible for watering it and, you know, taking, tending to it, planting, and doing all of those things. And I think $40 seems to be a very reasonable investment if the city is, you know, making the difference up with $85.
Yeah, I mean, I can live with it. I think though, that honestly, as much as the, as the cost of it is an investment, just the coming to get it is an investment.
I mean, just the, the having to find a truck or a trailer and all that, I mean, there's more to just that.
Except I think it will fit in a true, in a car, except not a super mini car. I think that was part of the, you can basically...
Tree Trust promotes that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the smaller gallon, or 10, what is it, a size 10?
Number 10 pot, about like that big.
Okay. We're going to have a lot of trees sticking out of trunks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that give you enough direction?
Yeah, so when I talk to Tree Trust tomorrow, she's waiting for our call, I'll tell them we'd like to go for 150 trees at $40 cost share.
Okay.
Excellent.
And if you could, you know, be cautious, I agree with Councilmember Juneman, that, you know, we don't need anything more. I've got the Japanese beetles crazy in my yard as well.
No, we'll drop the linden, we'll make sure we don't do the linden.
Okay, if there are other varieties, let's go with that, just so that, you know, we don't want to incur other costs to residents. Right, to residents, so, okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I'm looking forward to the tree program.
Yeah.
And picking out which tree I'm going to buy, because I'm going to do it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the Urban Roots Proposal for Harvest Park. City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams. Tonight, this report will be given to you, I believe, by Audra. And this is looking at a potential partnership with the Urban Roots Organization to establish and maintain native seed plots at Harvest Park. And this is, you know, last year, we had a partnership with the Minnesota Food Association to do a food training program or farm training program, and that didn't work out for them. So we're really happy that the Urban Roots has expressed an interest in a potential partnership. And with that, Mayor, I would ask you to call on Audra to give the background of this.
Ms. Robbins, would you please tell us about the Urban Roots Proposal for Harvest Park?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. As City Manager Coleman said, we did, the last couple of years have been working with MFA to create an urban agriculture program, like a Harvest Park Training Farm. And due to unforeseen circumstances, they were, they had to pull out of the MOU with the city. But because urban agriculture has been so important to the city of Maplewood, it was mentioned in the city strategic plan that they want to make it more accessible to residents. And the NRC, the commission has actually made it one of their top priorities to encourage urban agriculture. We wanted to look for another option, not just turn it back to turf or go right back to the way it was without exploring options for what we could do with this land that's been tilled and had a seed, you know, seed crop on it, and it's really good land now and ready for something. So we were exploring different options, and Urban Roots expressed interest, and we were happy to hear from them. And David Woods, who is the Program Director for Urban Roots, is here today to talk to you a little bit about what they do and what they envision that they could do with that land at Harvest Park to work with the city. And so with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Mr. Woods?
All right.
Welcome to the council.
Thank you. Is this a good volume for y'all? So yeah, I represent Urban Roots tonight. I'm going to kind of give you a brief overview of who we are and why I feel like we are skilled and qualified to do than the proposal that I'll bring up at the end. So Urban Roots is a 50-year-old nonprofit. We're celebrating our 50th year this year, and we're based on the east side in St. Paul. We're a youth development program whose mission is to cultivate and empower youth through nature, healthy food, and community. And we do that through three programs, a market garden program, a cooking program, and a conservation program. And I represent the conservation program primarily. So we do both summer and school year programming with the bulk of our work occurring during the summer, but we kind of keep it going all throughout the year. So each summer, we hire 60 youth, and, whoops, slow. And 30 of them work in the conservation program. And in the conservation program there, those youth are engaged in habitat restoration projects, primarily again on the east side. And so we're doing invasive species removal, native plantings. We're installing and maintaining rain gardens and pollinator gardens throughout the city. Our main work sites have been Bruce Fento Nature Sanctuary, Sweet Hollow Park, Indian Mounds Park, and Willow Brook Reserve, which is in between Indian Mounds and Battle Creek. It's owned by the DNR, it's kind of part of Pig's Eye Regional Park. And this is a paid internship for youth. A majority of them get hired through the City of St. Paul's Right Track Program, which is a youth employment program for low income or youth that are facing barriers to employment, and it's generally their first job. So we employ a progressive program model. So youth generally enter our program in the summer, and they are encouraged to come back for multiple years. They'll generally start 14 or 15 years old, working with us. And then each year they come back, they get new responsibilities and take on new roles within the organization. And in fact, some of them have stuck around for enough years where they have become paid staff to work during the summer. So in this picture, we've got Catherine, who is kind of closest to us in the photo, all helping to pull out a buckthorn plant right now. And Catherine this year was brought on as staff to help supervise and lead the conservation crews throughout the summer. And she started working as a youth my first summer, working in 2013 or 14. And so it's been really awesome, kind of seeing her grow from a little shy 14-year-old to one leading crews out in the woods. So in addition to kind of the bread and butter of invasive removal, they take on a lot of different special projects. The youth engage in citizen science work. We have four beehives, and they're involved in beekeeping at those hives. You saw in that very first photo, they were all on bikes. So we do a bike program where youth always start and end our shifts at our office over by Metro State University. And we have some vans that we use to drive them around, but we also have a fleet of bikes that we use to get around to our different work sites. And some of those returning youth get trained by a National Park Service Ranger to deliver tours of the parks that they work in. So they get training on how to design an interactive and fun tour, and then they divvy them up and take different stations and give tours to community members throughout the year. And so we engage in a lot of outreach, both the youth and then I, on my own, through service learning opportunities that we offer to schools, doing in-school programming. We've installed a couple of rain gardens in different elementary and high schools, and so I'll go in and do rain garden programming with that. And then we're involved in a variety of different community events throughout the year. The next one coming up is the Fail and Freeze Fest, which is a event encouraging community members to get outside and try new things in the wintertime. And we put on a puppet show out on the lake for this event, like a big puppet show in the vein of Bare Bones or In the Heart of the Beast. And then we really focus on with the youth, exposing them to a wide variety of different careers, especially the youth that are with us for multiple seasons. They get exposed to all sorts of careers, ranging from working with the DNR, a wide variety of different local chefs, and then things kind of outside our realm too of working with in different tech fields, manufacturing fields, healthcare. So we're really trying to equip them so that they are prepared for whatever that next step is that they decide to take. So our proposal for Harvest Park is stepping a little bit away from urban agriculture, but very much focused on what's already been discussed of, kind of bringing back in the native built environment into this urban environment. And so we are proposing to manage one and a half acres of the three acres that's been tilled up to create a native seed farm and demonstration site. So it'll consist of rows of individual native plants, and then a wild area to kind of show what this all would look like altogether. And as the plants get established, youth and volunteers will come through in the fall and late summer and collect seeds from different native plants that will then get used in future restoration projects. And some of the seeds will be used to propagate and then grow plants that could be used for kind of more manicured planting projects, so rain gardens or pollinator gardens, or for plant sales for community members. If this work got approved, we could be ready to go and start this spring. Urban Roots would be the kind of lead on this project, and we would be in charge of finding funding for the project. And we would provide the labor, a bulk of the labor through our interns and staff. We would need assistance from Maplewood in providing a water tank, which we were told was made available from a former community garden, and filling up that water tank with watering, or with water. And we would establish a drip irrigation system to do watering throughout the summer. The nice thing too about this being a native seed farm is, once these plants get established, after the second or third year, watering will be less of a need, and we can just rely on rainwater. And yeah, we're working on finding funding right now to be able to make this a reality. So the benefits to the city, it will be a really attractive demonstration site. Currently Harvest Park is primarily turf field, so this would be a very vibrant setting. We're looking to 40 to 50 different species of plants that would be on this farm. It would serve as an awesome place to host educational programming, and also provide service learning for schools and just community volunteer events. And we would partner with the nature center to kind of promote and put on that programming. A portion of the seed harvested and the plugs grown would be made available for the city of Maplewood to use in their restoration projects. And then in the future, we'd be open to exploring, employing Maplewood youth. Currently, it's just St. Paul youth that we primarily hire, but we would be open to exploring ways to hire Maplewood youth to be involved in this program. This first year, we would keep it in-house as we just understand this, but yeah. Something that I think ties in really well with what was being talked about earlier is another idea that could occur within this site is a gravel bed nursery. So it is pretty straightforward. It's a raised bed full of small gravel that you place small bare root trees in and grow them throughout the season, so spring to fall, and then you pull them out in the fall. And, do I have, no. Their root system develops to be a much stronger, hardier tree, and so they just have a much higher chance of survival when you plant them in the fall. The benefit of doing this is bare root trees are really cheap to buy, and you buy them in big bundles, and you can get a much wider variety of trees through this method. So this would be potentially for homeowners, but it could also be a system that the city uses to populate the land that they own with new trees going forward. And this is at one of our farm sites that we built, this gravel bed nursery last year. And that is kind of the quick and dirty of it, so I open it up to questions now.
Thank you for your presentation. It sounds fascinating. I have a question on your slide. You talked about, I understand about the water tanks. And then establishing outreach partnerships with the community, what does that look like?
Yeah, so that would be, since we are primarily a St. Paul-based program, we don't have the connections to the Maplewood community to kind of advertise and put on these events. So that would be what that is. So working with Parks and Rec and the nature, nature center to kind of get the word out, hey, this is what this is, and we have a seed collecting event, or we're going to hold a pollinator conversation, or a native plant walk. So it'd be establishing those connections so that people know what's going on.
Is that something where we could connect with our school district as well, and also with the Y, since we already have a partnership with the Y? Audra, do you want to respond to that?
Mayor, members of the council, that was, in our initial talks, it was, they just want to know how to connect with the community of Maplewood, because like you said, they're based in St. Paul. So it would be through the communications team, through Parks and Rec, the YMCA, and our connections with the schools, bringing them aboard with the service learning so the schools know about the opportunity where they could come out to Harvest Park Farm and, and maybe do, you know, something in the spring, in the fall, or the, the community education programs, just getting the word out, maybe holding some of those classes at the YMCA and being off, so there's a lot of different ways we could do this. They're just looking for help from the city to help with that portion of it.
We've got a lot of partners that Audra can connect you with. I think it sounds fascinating. Councilmember Juneman, what do you think?
Thank you. This is a great idea. This is one of those things where I could just say, I'm glad I'm still here for year 18. I think we've been waiting for years to find some way to get something like this going, and I really admire you for be, having this program so well put together already. And it will help us, and hopefully we can help you and your program grow. And I'm glad that, you know, you are keeping it, as you say, in-house till we get established. But then we'll have something to show our community and maybe get our kids involved. I think it's a wonderful idea. I know at Waterfest, most years, there's a group, I think it's from Johnson High School, but I'm not sure, that they have a, some kind of a conservation and green gardening type club that they're trying to encourage. And so I think there's, there's room for that to start happening with us as well. So it's, I think it's a great idea.
Love it. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this is a great example too of where the city can take what we're good at and the assets that we have and bring together partners who are already good at something to do this sort of thing. You know, I think sometimes our first reaction is to try to go it alone and do it ourselves, and I think we, we keep learning that lesson over and over, that finding people who are already good at things and working with them is a really good way to go. So yeah, I think this is great, and definitely look forward to further exploring this with you.
Yes, cool. Anything else, councilmembers? Audra, did you have something else?
And then, Mayor, members of the council, then our plan going forward, next steps would be to get together with the staff from Urban Roots and kind of develop what an MOU might look like to put this together. They would come to the, and they would have that to put in front of council at the meeting in February, one of the meetings in February, hopefully to have that to bring forward to you again, so you could see what a MOU might look like if we went forward with this.
Absolutely.
I think that's great. I'm anticipating that this will, you know, fly through. I think it's, it's a wonderful program for our city, I think. One thing that I would like to see is, after the first year, let's revisit this and what worked. And I also like that idea of the, going to the raised garden to...
For trees?
To do trees.
The gravel bed, yeah.
I think that that sounds like another idea in terms of the other 1.5 acres. I assume that 1.5 acres will just kind of rest for the year? Is that kind of what the plan is?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council, again, we're still looking if there might be someone else interested, but if not, because the land is ready and it's... interested, but if not, because the land is ready and it's prepared and there's options for it, we'd kind of see where things go with Urban Roots and if there's potential to expand or, you know. So yeah, there's no rush to turn it back to turf.
Okay, good, good.
And those gravel beds are like ten by twenty feet. They're actually pretty small, and you can get, I think we planted two hundred, three hundred trees in our little gravel bed. You pack them in really tight, and yeah.
Maybe we could sell them.
Yeah. That is, lots of options.
Maybe we could put those into our tree program.
Talk about.
Councilmember Druneman?
I was just going to say that, and I would, if this is successful, I would like to have us look at other parks to look for space to do the same kind of thing, because otherwise it's all in one location. And I think there's potential in some of our other parks, because it doesn't take a lot of space. That's the nice part. And lord knows, we don't need turf grass everywhere.
Thank you, Councilmember Druneman. Do you need anything further from us? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Woods. Next on our agenda is the MORE team presentation. City Manager Coleman, do you want to introduce that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. The MORE team is an internal team. It's made up of city employees to address racial equity issues. Tonight, staff is seeking support or consensus from the city council regarding a new initiative with our employees to engage them in community-sponsored events. And we think that this initiative will actually bridge connections between staff and our residents that we serve. And Mr. Funk and Mr. Mandor are here to tell you more about the program. I can't tell you when Mr. Funk brought it to the management team's attention, we were all really excited about it. Being the city manager, I always have to be a little bit tough on some ideas, right? So we make sure that we get them, think of everything. And one of my concerns was that we really tightly monitor and use the staff resources that we need for each particular project. And what I mean by that is when we have an event in a park or a touch truck or whatever it may be, that we understand the kinds of volunteers we need and the numbers of volunteers that we need, so that we don't have too many people showing up with nothing to do. Not that that's a bad thing, but if it's going to be sponsored with city work time, we really want to make sure that we're going to be productive with our time. And as someone who volunteers occasionally, there's nothing worse than getting there, and there's too many volunteers. So I asked the two mics to think about that, and they're going to address that tonight in their comments as well. But I think this is a really great idea, and it really ties to our strategic objective of community engagement. And so with that, Mayor, if you'd like, I think Mr. Funk is going to kick this off.
Mr. Funk?
Great. Mayor and council, good evening. Thank you for allowing us some time this evening to provide a brief update regarding the activities of Maplewood Organization for Racial Equity. And before I turn over to the slide, that acronym is MORE. And I'll get into some MORE acronyms in a second, no pun intended, but our MORE group. We're going to talk a little bit about our MORE group, and again, which is our Maplewood Organization for Racial Equity. Mike Mandor, our Chief of EMS, is Chair of our MORE team. And before I hand it over to Mr. Mandor, I'd like to give you an overview of why and when we started and some of the activity that lead us up to this evening. That's our next slide. When you look back at our racial equity efforts, this is a journey that has begun over two years ago with the city's participation in GARE. I just mentioned another acronym. GARE stands for the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Former Public Safety Director Paul Schnell provided the leadership to engage Maplewood in these discussions. Also, former Mayor Slawick also represented the city for about a year and a half in a mayor's group. So the city has, for the last couple of years, been very active in this effort. As you may recall, GARE partnered with the League of Minnesota Cities, and Maplewood was part of a first round of communities to take a deeper dive into race and community. Concurrently, the city council recognized the importance of advancing racial equity in Maplewood. Maplewood's diversity, as you know, has changed significantly over the years. If you go back almost thirty years ago to 1990, people of color were about six percent of our population. Fast forwarding to today, we know that's around thirty-two percent. The city council acknowledged this trend by incorporating a strategic initiative called Community Inclusiveness into the city's strategic plan. And the slide in front of you really represents the council's conversation a couple of years ago when we were at a strategic planning workshop where you said you wanted to build a stronger community. And when you look at that definition, it says it best, which is to strive to create a community that is engaged, tolerant, and compassionate about everybody. To further build a community that embraces and respects diversity and that utilizes different perspectives and experiences to build an inclusive and equitable city for all. I think most notably at the recent State of the City address, our guest speaker, our keynote speaker from 3M spoke on this very subject. I just mentioned GARE, and again, I want to get it over to Mr. Mandor here. So this is the last slide that I'll really speak to, and that is just kind of highlighting a couple of the other activities. So aside from GARE, the city, as you know, partnered with the Wilder Foundation, and that was when the city obtained a $75,000 grant from the St. Paul Foundation. We spent about a year working with the Wilder Foundation and our partnership and doing a lot of surveys, both internally and externally with the community, with our staff and with members of the community. And we had a presentation here recently from them. We had an all-staff training, and that was a piece of it. So all of our staff, our benefit-earning staff, went through, it's about a two-hour training, and one of the big takeaways was implicit bias. We also had our Beyond Diversity Training, where we had twenty, roughly twenty-six of our upper management team here at the city participated in a cooperative effort with the city of St. Louis Park in Bloomington on a two-day training. The attendees and from our staff and from all those other staffs really worked on a framework, strategies, and tools on how to have courageous conversations on race. We learned the foundations of how to de-institutionalize racism. We also looked at how we as staff play a key leadership role in eliminating disparities within our community. I think it's safe to say that that training was largely transformative, transformationive for our staff. Discussion were had immediately after that training, and it was really a part of that discussion that we as a staff continue this conversation. Out of that, we grew two racial equity teams. And so of our twenty-six staff members, we split that in two, and so we had two teams consisting of thirteen. They largely created a framework that is leading today's conversation. And how did MORE come to be? Just a real quick comment on that. And MORE is just really an evolution of our two internal teams. So it's not a new group of employees that's leading this effort, but rather, it's a rebranding effort. And the MORE acronym isn't widely used today, but we anticipate it being more talked about in the community as in a few weeks or about a month from now, when we as staff come back to you, council, and talk about the larger strategic plan. We really see MORE's efforts gaining a lot of traction and using our communications team to really explain to the community what our efforts are going to be. So real quick, a little bit about MORE. It consists of some staff members from eight different city departments. I'd like to just briefly mention those, because I think it's important why we have diversity on our racial equity team. As I already mentioned, Mike Mandor, the Chief of EMS, is from the fire department. Molly Wellins is our Environmental Health Officer from Community Development. Joe Sheeran, our Communications Manager from Administration. Steve Love, our Public Works Director, obviously from Public Works. Sandra Witt is one of our DMV Licensing Specialists from our Finance Department. Audra Robbins is participating as our Park and Rec Manager from Park and Rec's Department. Gina Kutschenmeister is one of our administrative assistants, also from the Park and Rec's Department. We do have a couple of police representatives. One is Kerry Karati, our Lieutenant. Also, Emily Burt McGregor, one of our new police officers. And then myself is on that team. Our team of this composition has the potential to implement, we think, significant improvements throughout our organization, and thus is a powerful tool in our culture of continuous improvement. There seems to be a certain amount of synergy from this group in that we bring different experiences, skills, and background. This in itself is leading to some, I think, tremendous creativity, and we're seeing that in our group, as has played out here recently. And it's actually, we've seen a lot of good problem solving as well. And as Mr. Mandor comes up here, I think you'll hopefully see this play out in the coming minutes. I think you know that addressing racial equity in our community is complex and without a set of unique challenges. The MORE group has spent the last two years with some degree of success, but I'd also be remiss if I didn't say we've been faced with some frustrations. Moving the dial, I'd say, is difficult on this issue. We are fortunate, however, to have city staff members committed to a call for action that we're ready to step in, but so far, a lot of that effort has been around planning. And I think a few of us would say there's been a lot of talking, and so I think we're ready for some real action. However, we need to be diligent and resourceful, as right now, there isn't a budget tied to racial equity, at least not yet, and I think that'll be a conversation as we move into a 2020 budget. So when it comes to our planning efforts here recently, we've really had a focus on three different efforts. One is being, it'd be coordinated. That is that we want to make sure we maximize resources from a city-wide perspective versus department to department. What we've discovered is, I hate to use the word silos, but there's been a lot of activity that departments were just doing, doing great work. But now we're looking at more of a coordinated effort so we can, so things aren't as segmented as they are today. Second is measurable. And one of the key aspects of our strategic plan, and you'll hear from Lois Knutson later, is how we're spending a great deal of time developing key outcomes and then the performance measures that are tied to that. Mr. Mandor will also get into those shortly, but I think what you'll see is that we're attempting at a look at means of measuring success and what that looks like in terms of racial equity. How can we move that dial? And last is accountability. We have assigned key outcomes and performance measures to our staff members. We are now accountable to each other, to you as a council, and to the community on our racial equity efforts. Therefore, through this work, we are no longer just doing things for the sake of doing things, but rather being mindful and with purpose when it comes to this year's action initiatives. We certainly have a lot of work to get done tonight, but I think as City Manager Coleman stated, it begins with your support, an initiative that will further begin to bridge the gap between the city, our staff, and the community. I invite at this time Mr. Mandor forward to talk a little more in depth about what this initiative looks like and then some of those key outcomes and performance measures.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Mandor.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. To pick up where Mr. Funk left off, in 2017, a group of supervisors and leaders within the managers, directors, leaders within the organization attended Beyond Diversity Conversation, our Beyond Diversity Training. And afterwards, we were having a conversation, Mr. Love and Mr. Funk, and I believe Mr. Folds and I, and we said, this was great training, but it would be a shame if it stopped here. So, and there's not really a playbook on how we create a more inclusive environment within the community, but it was something that we were all interested in specifically after attending that training. So we started a couple of racial equity teams. Mr. Love chaired one, and I chaired the other, and we started to just have some conversations based on the framework of the Beyond Diversity Training. And to Mr. Funk's point, this has been challenging. There's been a lot of talking. There's been a lot of things put on paper, and we truly believe as a group that 2019 is a year of action, where we're going to start making some of these things that we've talked about come to reality. One of the first things that we did as a racial equity team was watch Simon Sinek's Why, especially in the fire department and probably for most departments. We're really good at talking about what we do and about how we do it, but if you challenge us to ask why we do it, sometimes that can be a harder question to answer. So we were very thoughtful about thinking about, okay, so we know that we want to be more inclusive community, but why do we want to exist as an organization and as the Maplewood Organization for Racial Equity? So we created that why statement as a collaborative between the twenty-six different members of the two committees and to state that we believe in building a community that embraces and respects diversity and that uses different perspectives and experiences to build an inclusive and equitable city for all. With that framework, we also thought that it was important that our committee come up with a mission statement to promote equal opportunity by recommending policies and actions to management and city council that will help move the city towards better representing and serving the community. And throughout, you know, from 2017 to present time, we've spent several time creating guiding documents, missions, visions, why statements. And really, the past couple of months have been spent working with the senior management team and the MORE team to think about how can we support the strategic plan, specifically the strategic initiative around community inclusiveness. And we've came up with four key outcomes. And one of them is really why we're here tonight. You're going to get a deeper dive into the strategic plan in February or March, specifically what all those four key outcomes mean. But one thing we want to get moving, and like we said, make 2019 a year of action, and one of those initiatives is key to have your support early on so that we can start the planning processes. But those outcomes are listed here. You know, we want to have a community where people are accepted and engaged, and part of that is making sure that our employees are engaged in the community and that they're culturally aware of the people that they serve. We want the demographics of the organization to reflect the community and that our city services are accessible to our community. All these outcomes will have performance measures and action initiatives that will support them, and as I said, those will be detailed more in February or March. The one that we want to talk about specifically tonight is that initiative around employee engagement, or that employees are engaged in community outreach and are culturally aware. So the Public Safety Department, specifically the Police Department, has had in their strategic plan a requirement that all patrol, all police department employees participate in a minimum of twelve hours of community outreach activity. So that can be a range of different community initiatives, but they've made it part of their culture that employees will be out in the community a minimum of twelve hours a year. In public safety, police and fire, that can be somewhat natural to our positions because we're invited to these different events, we're out in the community, that's just part of our work. But as we thought about it as a group, we want to create an entire organization that engages with the community and sometimes in non-traditional ways. So much like the wellness program has become a cultural identity in the city of Maplewood, we want engagement and cultural awareness to be part of our culture as an organization. And we think that by putting employees out there, engaging with the community in non-traditional ways is a way to do that and really get that mutual understanding of what our community looks like and how we can be more, how we can serve them better. So what we're recommending is that eighty percent of benefit-earning employees will participate in a city-sponsored event annually. We anticipate those events to be about two hours. And when we think about this, you know, Public Works people, they often get to set up for an event, but they may not get to interact with somebody at an event and truly see how their work impacts how they live on a daily basis. And you can go down the department list, Finance Department, DMV, et cetera. We all want to be out in the community, and we thought that a two-hour investment was a start to do that. That being said, we understand that some employees, things come up. We started with an eighty percent benchmark to see where we could come up with from there. So we're looking for council support. We're trying to create staff as a bridge to a community and enhance their awareness of the people that they serve, and we think that we can better do that by having them out in the community at least once a year. As I said, police and fire already have this expectation, and it's been very successful. And we think by expanding it at this smaller level citywide will help us in our racial equity and inclusion initiatives. To City Manager Coleman's initial remarks, we also want to be very thoughtful about the resources. We don't want to just throw twenty or thirty people at a problem that requires ten, or at an event, not a problem, but at an event that requires ten. So one of the pieces that our group has come up with, with Parks and Rec, Public Works, and Public Safety starting, is having a group, an outreach team, where in 2018, for example, Parks and Rec and the Fire Department both did a bike rodeo within three weeks of one another. And that's where we started to recognize these silos, because we're all coming together. Now we're having meetings together and looking at, okay, what does 2019 look like? How can we all work together and support each other's events, rather than each individually coming up with individual calendars and then inviting each other a couple of weeks before? So that outreach team, things like signup genius, working with the communications department to make sure that we have calendars that are posted in public for employees and availability for them to sign up, so that if we need six people for this event, we create six slots, and then we have an administrator that can just let those employees come in, and then when they show up, we put them to work wherever they're needed. Employees will be paid for this. There's several HR-related things. There's several HR-related things that we need to iron out, and the policy's in the works right now by Mr. Funk and, and his team. So really, what we're asking is that, to get a general sense of where council's at with this idea, this is an investment in city resources. Two hours times 160-plus employees, I mean, that adds up, but if we're going to be a more inclusive community, we think that this is a logical first step in making 2019 a year of action. Some of the next steps, like I said earlier, we'll have a deeper dive into all the key outcomes around community inclusiveness in February and March. We've created a work plan. We've had all of our action initiatives, performance measures, key outcomes have been assigned to individuals to add to our accountability as an, as a team in 2019. We have a monthly meeting where we review all those things and where we continue to make sure that we're staying on top of this so it doesn't get pushed back and deprioritized. So this is really a priority for all of us. There's been a lot of work that's gone into it, and we want to see action in 19. So with that, we welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you for your presentation. I think that the MORE team has really done a great job putting some, some weight behind it, because I know race equity work a lot of times is talking and trying to find action steps. I think this is a really great example of a good action step moving forward. I would like to see, you know, as you go through your organizational process with it in identifying the different kinds of opportunities that you're going to have for staff to participate in, that you have a variety so that people can maybe pick out something that they find that they're naturally interested in anyway. I know, you know, Maplewood does a great job of different community events. I mean, I know Audra does a lot of different events, and the police and fire do events. We really are out there trying to connect with our community, and I think this is a way that staff can connect with the community, because the one thing that's true is that the staff serves our community, just like the council up, sitting up here, serves our community. And if you only see the community while you're here in a building, or you're out, you know, and plowing the roads or something, I don't know, that isn't really necessarily, that doesn't lend itself to a lot of connections being made, and I think that that's what this is really about. So I think this is a great step forward, and I like the ideas of trying to be intentional about it. Might I suggest that we try this for a year and that, I mean, really make it an initiative for 2019, that we're going to take these action steps, and then I'd like a report back at the end of the year on, how did this work? What did we learn from this? And where are we going into 2020 with it? So I think it's a great idea. I know council member Juneman has her light on, so does council member Smith. I think, council member Juneman was first.
Thank you. Very, very nicely presented. I really appreciate that. And I don't think we can say it enough times, and I think we have some work to do with our residents. It's not just staff as far as believing this. Last week, somewhere on the radio, I heard that overall Minnesota has a 17 to 20% diversity population. We have 32. So, you know, we're ahead of the game in many ways. And some of these people have been here quite a while, and I do think a certain, certain number of people have connected simply because they're out there wanting to be connected. And I think what you're talking about is reaching the other people who are not as forthcoming. But I do, if you're talking about things for employees to do even, I cannot put out of my mind some of the fun things that I have been part of just because they happen to be there and it's, there I am. But those park events in the summer where you serve hot dogs, I am telling you, you meet everyone by the hundreds. It's just phenomenal. And nobody looks at anybody else as looking any different. That is what is so fabulous about that event. Everybody's just having a good time. And I just think, I'm actually thinking we should ask some of our commission members if they wouldn't want to start doing some of those things as well, just to see the amount of diversity that's in the community that just, it's here and it's, it's fun to be part of it. Another one that strikes me, because I've been doing it for so long, is the spring cleanup, and you can testify, people in cars, everybody comes, and there's a lot of diversity coming through those incoming lines, and how many people of color have said to me in the past, thank you for doing this. We didn't know what to do with these things. That's a connection, and it's a real live, everyday connection, but they're happy and they're so grateful for something that isn't really that big a deal, but to them it is. I mean, you know, I just, it's phenomenal where you can find it if you're just looking for it. I do know that, you know, all of our schools, both North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, and Roseville, have a high diversity population, and I think there's more ways to engage with kids than we are doing. One of the things that strikes me is we're all invited in the spring, I can't remember, is it Weaver or Webster? Is it Weaver? For the leadership? And I don't think it should just be elected officials. I think, you know, you know, but if there's somebody on staff who's never done it, I'd encourage them to do it because those kids are so excited. I mean, you know, and the way through, to any culture, I don't care what color you are, is through the children. And then through my own work on the dispatch policy committee, which is an animal of a different color, might I say? But we try to focus, or I try to get into focused on reaching people through their communities of faith, because many of our diverse populations, that is a center, cultural center for them. They meet together, they have a good time together. We are invited to things. It's fun to go, but I think it's also a place where we can exchange who we are and what goes on in our community. I just think there's many more options for a lot of people to do things they're not doing because they don't even think about them. And the one that really strikes me the most though is spring cleanup. I'm like, who would think? But it's true, and it's actually a great way to meet people. I'm really glad you're doing this. Thank you.
Council member Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, chief. I'm also really glad you're doing this work. I think it's important that we really, though, define the difference between general community engagement, which is, I think, a lot of things that Kathy was talking about, which I think are really critical things for us to be doing, and race equity work. And race equity work, to me, is harder, it's messier, it's less defined, it's scary for some people, and it's, it is a, a process that particularly white people need to go through to really start to have, have an understanding of different perspectives. It's a journey I've been on personally for 10 years, and I'm just getting started as far as I'm concerned. So I think, I think it's really important as we do something like this to really define down to say, is this about general community engagement, or is this about race equity? And if it's about race equity, it's not just any community engagement they need to be doing. And then I also think it's really important that we start to track, to the mayor's perspective, if we come back in a year, what have folks learned? What are they doing differently? You can't measure something like this, per se, but you can start to collect insights into what is this program doing for staff that's helping them think or do things differently than they did before? And if we're not seeing that, then it's, I have to put my two hours in, and I got to go do something, and yeah, I might learn something, and it'll be kind of good to meet some people who are different than me, but you're not really evolving. And so I think a year from now, I'll be interested to hear what are some of those things that are getting under people's skin, making them think differently. I mean, in public safety, you guys are on the leading edge of a lot of this, and I think you guys have a deeper understanding of how different communities have to, are reacting in the world, right? And especially in crisis, you guys are there. But for those of us who aren't, it's, we have to push a little bit harder to enter into those worlds. So I just want to make sure you guys have a really laser-focused on what the mission is and an idea of a way to report out outcomes and sort of share the, share those insights across the participants as well.
Council member Smith, you bring up an excellent point, and I'll let Mr. Funk talk about some of the metrics that were attached to this. I do want to point out that one thing that was core to this group was that we were not going to eliminate the concept of racial equity. So that's why it's the Maplewood Organization of Racial, for racial equity, is we didn't want to water down the mission, to your point. We're being thoughtful about that, and I think in 2018, you can look at some of the outreach initiatives with the Corinne community, with the mosque, and we want to be, continue to be thoughtful about that, but also being inclusive to the entire community. So really, understanding and we're tracking with you and trying to wade through that to be focused on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Just real quick, I'm going to invite Joe Sheeran up. As I mentioned earlier, Joe is part of our, of our MORE team, and I think this speaks to what you're talking about, council member Smith, and all of you for that matter. We are being diligent. I can't stress that enough, and I think that's why we've had, and again, I look at some of the folks, we got a number of us in the room here that are part of our team, and the reason there's been a lot of conversation is really trying to wrap your arms around such a big issue. It is, you're right, it's complicated, it's, it's not easy, it's messy, and I think what we're trying to strive for tonight is really, we're talking about staff, right? But there are a lot of pieces to this issue. We felt certainly the piece with staff is we need our staff engaged if we want the other pieces to be successful as well. It can't be a handful of our employees out on the leading edge of this. We need all of our staff to be on this journey, so that's why we're here with you this evening. And we'll get more into the performance measures because that took a lot of time, too, is trying to figure out exactly, how do you measure success of community engagement? And how do you measure success of a broader base enthusiasm for our diversity? And so it is tough to measure, and we spent a great deal of time talking about that, and we'll talk about what those measures look like. But I wanted to just have Jamie, just Joe Sheeran, talk really quick about, I think, an exciting opportunity that Joe is really planning for in February. It's the Wonder Camera event that hits at, I think, what you're saying, council member Smith, in terms of a focus, a targeted audience and a focus for underserved and maybe people of color community.
So, so mark your calendars. February 28th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00. I apologize for the late notice. I was, we, like he said, mainly focused on inviting other staff members. And essentially with the Wonder Camera is, if you're not familiar with it, it's a job fair, and it's aimed at students who are from underrepresented communities, ages from about 16 to 18. We partnered with an organization called the Sundance Family Foundation. They are a social entrepreneur, social equity organization that reaches out. They have deep connections with the, mostly high school, not K-12, but mostly high school, and they organized a similar Wonder Camera at our Maplewood Community Center in the summer. Great turnout, but that was geared specifically toward manufacturers, people who'll tool and die type businesses, Anderson Windows, those types. Our PD was invited to that. And I said, you know, in my previous iteration of my career, I worked with the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association. One of the biggest problems that law enforcement agencies have are attracting officers who are from diverse backgrounds. In a pool of maybe 50, 60 officers, and correct me if I'm wrong, they might get three or four. So is that, you know, three or, and that's really tough. So our point was, and our conversation at the Chiefs Association was, if you wait for them to go to college, they're not coming to us. They're going into the private sector, they're going into where they think the money is or following their passion. So why not reach out at the high school level and try to get students engaged? And, and what we figured is, same thing with us. Instead of us waiting for these kids to go to college or go to a tech school or kind of go, go on their own for a couple of years, why, why wait? Go out and pick off the tree. Find, find people you want, get them involved when they're 15, 16, 17 years old. I mean, my father, I don't agree with him on most things. One of his best pieces of advice was, get a city job. And I think, and I think it took me till I was 40 to figure it out, but I think people who are 15, 16, 17 years old, they don't see that as a viable route, and they don't see that this is in fact a career path. I mean, we have engineers with advanced degrees. We have, some of the school you have to go to be a law enforcement officer. We have an IT guy here who probably working in Silicon Valley and, and, you know, and HR, and there's a lot of things that you don't realize, and so that's the whole point of this. Job fair. So I could explain more about you later, the job fair, but essentially, we reached out to our colleagues in other cities, and instead of Minneapolis, Maplewood, competing with St. Paul, competing with Roseville, it's everyone who is in Public Works from all of those cities will be at one booth to explain what Public Works is all about and how to get a job in Public Works. Same thing with Park and Rec. Sorry about Studio B.
And where is it going to be?
It's going to be the Maplewood Community Center in that main room that we have.
Okay. February 28th, 10, 10 to 2:00. I'm going to mark it on my calendar. I think that is a wonderful opportunity. What other, is, are we the primary movers of this, or are we?
Yes, we, the city of Maplewood, I reached out to the folks at the Sundance Family Foundation when they did their event back in July, and we are the main driver. So every one of our department heads is a liaison to their partners and helping us round up partners in other cities. So when they come, it will be a Maplewood, Sundance Family Foundation, and other local governments type deal.
And we are working with our school districts, I take it?
Yeah, we're working with 622, 623. We've given the contacts over to the Sundance Family Foundation, and they've, because they, because they have to schedule things like busing, they're providing busing, and they're providing the outreach, and they, they know that world much better. So we've been partnering with them to try to, so right now, we've confirmed 622, 623, and a couple of other area schools.
Have the private schools in our community been approached as well?
We haven't reached out to the private schools.
Okay. That might be a good idea.
We've reached out to some alternative schools, but not the private schools.
Okay. The private schools might be a nice opportunity as well. I mean, I don't want to close the door on anyone who may want to come to us.
Yeah, and we were, we were just kind of, yeah, it's, that's, we'll, we'll look into that.
Okay. It sounds like a wonderful opportunity. Thank you for sharing that. Anything else that anyone would like to add? I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.